Meeting of Brookshire Economic Development Corporation to be held Thursday, December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four at five thirty P. M. In the Council Chambers of Brookshire Municipal Building, forty twenty-nine Fifth Street, Brookshire, Texas, for the purpose of considering the following agenda items. Call to order. We'll have a prayer and a pledge.
Father, we would just like to thank you once again, Father God, for allowing us the opportunity to gather tonight in the city council chamber. We ask, Father God, that all decisions that be made upon on tonight be pleasing to you. Father, we ask that you continue being not only with this board, but being with the city as a whole. We ask that you continue to bring us together, unify us as one. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We have a roll call.
President.
Present.
President.
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 Next agenda item, public comments. We don't have anything on public comments. We'll move to agenda item number six, consent agenda. Approval of Brookshire EDC meeting minutes for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and the financial report.
I'd like to discussion on item B, financial report. We can approve item A.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve item A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion for item B.
So, Ms. President, concerned the financial report, I'd like to just go over some of line items on the report.
Yes, sir.
So, just to make note that the salary section for EDC, the salary section, the payroll taxes, health insurance, all it's missing, it's not updated for the month of October. So, I did speak with the comptroller, Stacy Guti, and she has assured us that that will be updated. I just want to make note of that.
For October or November?
For October and November.
Okay.
Two months. Also, line item number five-two-oh-three-oh, professional services. And then line item right up under that one, five-two-oh-three-one. So, the B-E-C-D, the professional services, as I understand, that's engineering fees. So, I have questions about that, and I think she's going to clarify when she returns. She's out in training class right now. While we spent the sixty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Line item fifty-two-oh-thirty-one, the BEC coordinator, that's the contract that we have with Mr. Joe Ish. Ms. Guti said that his, the contract is being paid on the city side first, and then we'll, EDC will have to reimburse that fee. That's why you see that's zero. And you see in the annual budget is seventy thousand, that's the agreed amount upon the contract there. So, two months of reimbursement will need to be done to this line item for October and Okay, if you go down to beautification, count number five-six-one-forty, that's twenty-nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars. I had question, asked questions about this particular charge, and Ms. Guti informed me that this is the moach that was placed out on Highway ninety under the crepe murder trees. So, that's what that particular cost is. And below that, downtown improvements, five-six-two-two-zero, you see expense for ninety, ninety, ninety-six-hundred dollars. I asked Ms. Guti about this, and that fee, that cost was for Christmas lights.
Nine thousand dollars?
Ninety, nine, nine thousand six hundred dollars, yes, Christmas lights.
Is this something that the board approved? Had we already previously budgeted for this?
No, this was not a budgeted item for EDC. So...
I didn't miss the meeting. Was this, did y'all talk about this at the last meeting or something?
No.
No. It's something that we'll get with Ms. Guti when she return and find out what's going on with it. But it's not a budgeted item, just to make note of that. If you go to page... To prior year unexpendited funds, I think that's probably page seven-eight, it's going to be account number five-four-three-seven-one-zero. Prior year unexpendited funds. Four-three-seven-one-zero. You'll see that there's a budgeted dollar amount of six hundred thousand dollars, okay? I have a question there to Ms. Guti about this as well. This is prior year dollars that was from last year, carryover. Six hundred thousand dollars, just to make note, it's in that line item right there. And so, that's kind of where we at with the finances, Ms. President. Are there any other questions, other than the Christmas lights?
For me, I guess, can I get clarification on the Christmas lights? How was this supposed to be handled? Were we supposed to, was it supposed to come before the board, before this got paid out? Because now these items are already paid.
Yes. Typically, that is the process. When we do our annual budget, we decide on what items that will be budgeted for, for that fiscal year, and we go from there. But the Christmas lights, it's something that we just need clarification on.
I'll make sure I reach out to Ms. Guti and Ms. Malina and see if we can get clarification on that.
And can, one more question, I'm sorry, and this one's for the attorney. This is something that we can do, approve, expensive for us.
Yes.
Easy, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, sir.
Anybody else?
So, I make a motion that we approve the financials with the, with the understanding that we need some clarification on the ninety-six-hundred-dollar expenses for, in the downtown improvements account for Christmas lights. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. We'll move on to agenda item number seven. Discussion impossible action regarding receiving invoices for the financial report. Ms. Denise Odie.
So, from my experience... So, from my experience in working in financial, we've alwa, I've always experienced having a backup for the statement, which is the invoice. So, I understand the line items and what they're paying. I would just like to know, you know, what's on the invoice, what the invoice says to go with the statement.
Ms. Vicki, are you receiving the invoices?
No, sir. All the invoices go straight to Mr. [inaudible].
And we did let her know that we wanted to start receiving those invoices. You hadn't received any? We did let Ms. Guti know that we wanted to receive the invoices so we can keep copies for EDC and EDC files, as well as the city files, as long as the, if the money's being spent out of EDC, we need financial records of it, not just the city, but EDC needs. And we need, and we've done it in the past, for whatever reason it stopped. So, I'll reach out to Ms. Guti and figure out why we're not getting the invoices, to have those filed on the EDC side, so I'll board members that have access to them. Anything else?
That's, that's the only thing I was concerned about.
No, okay. No action taken on agenda item number seven. Number eight, discussing possible action, setting budget date, time, and location for the two thousand and twenty-five business retention expansion program. Ms. Board Member Dunn.
Okay, so I do apologize for my absence on the last meeting, but I think y'all briefly touched on this. This is something that, when I first came aboard, that we were doing, I thought was a great way to network with the local businesses, hear their concerns, their needs, and also with new, especially with new businesses coming in to the area. So, I think Ms. Vicki has provided a couple of, like, examples. The time that I was the first meeting network mixer that we did, we had a business sponsor the luncheon, but I think because we haven't done this in a while, my personal opinion is if we can host the first one, and then moving forward, allow the businesses to be sponsors, however that may look. So, that's just my thoughts.
I think it's a great idea. And so, have we decided on a date? Can we decide on a date? I think we talked about having it at the convention center here.
Yeah, yes, sir. I don't know if this is something that we want to do, something quarterly, something, I don't know, however, whatever y'all decide.
Ms. Vicki, in the past, how often did we have it when, when it was at Eve's Garden?
It was normally like this time of the year, around, between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Like in August, we did, for some reason, we couldn't find a venue, and I still went in, in August, to that area. I think it's a hot out in December. And it was always just once a year.
Once a year, okay.
My personal opinion is to have it more than once a year. That's just my personal opinion, just, but...
I'd like to see it done more than once a year. It's not like we have businesses. We're growing, and it would, it would give some of the new businesses opportunities to, to come in and meet some of the, the city officials. A lot of times, the police, the, the new business owners want to meet the police department, get the note of community where they want to set up shop. So, doing it quarterly, I don't think that's unreasonable. It's going to take a lot of work. Would you be willing to spearhead that?
I could, absolutely.
We can set the dates, and if we don't get the responses, you know, we may have to postpone it to the next quarter.
Can you work, we, we need a cost estimate. I think we may be able to use downtown improvements account for, for this. But we need to do a workup sheet, see what date where, you know, we're going to provide giveaways, we're going to provide food, and just put a cost to it and see where we at. And quotations, I mean, I'll be glad to help you with that.
Okay.
And that we're, and that we're possibly thinking about having it at the convention center, we also need to make sure we get with the ladies here at City Hall to go with the dates and see what dates will be available to use, to utilize the convention center.
Absolutely.
And you have any idea when you want to have the first one?
Well, I was going to say maybe give me and Vicki, is Vicki time at our next meeting in January, have a little more information for you guys, as far as date, time.
I would say shoot for like March or April for the first one. Get past the holidays, they give you three or four months, three or four months to gather everything, get everything together.
Sounds great. I like that. Thank you.
Okay, there be no action taken on this one? Agenda item number eight, we're moving on to agenda item number nine, discussion possible action joining local chamber of commerce.
I, I don't know if anybody else talked about this one, but I, I, this was something that, again, that we had done in the past, and I run into previous people in chambers, you know, so I think it's, that's also a great way for us to...
Network.
Network and show off our city as well, so...
So, I don't, I don't know when the, the last time the West I T and Chamber Commerce even met.
Yeah, I think it's been over a year that we went, and I don't know if they...
Mr. Kirchner.
Yeah, it's no longer. It's Mrs. Kirchner was the one in that first.
So, we need to do some research and see if there's any...
I mean, Ms. Vicki gave us a couple in your packet.
Do you have like your area ones, like your Gulf Coast Chamber Executive? Just one to name a few.
Have the Katy one.
Folscher has one too.
Sealy has one. Everybody around us.
So, Mr. Ash, you're... Can you get some information for those four? Okay, thank you.
They have a close connection between the city and the chamber there. They're good people, but I think Katie's law is established primarily because, I shouldn't address you properly, I apologize. Katie's larger, because it's been around longer, if you think about it, Brookshire's growth has been tremendous over the last few years, and so their business community is ultimately relatively small. The city has a focus really on, on wanting to do office space and doesn't have any interest in industrial, so their business base is primarily retail at this moment, and so they don't have a big chamber, whereas Katy, Katy proper is relatively small and, but the larger Katy area includes that Katy chamber, so I think you'd have a larger reception intuitively, that's what I'm thinking, without any proof, facts behind it, as to the Katy chamber. But I'd still look at them both, I mean, you, you can make your decision, there's no, you don't have to decide by asking, and certainly I can get that for you.
And is this current, Ms. Vicki, these numbers for Katy? So, there is one in your, in your packet.
And it's not uncommon for a lot of cities to have contracts with chambers to help host, for example, you can do them for marketing events, you can do them for the state of the cities, you can do for a lot of different things, is where they utilize the chambers, primarily because their staff is oftentimes familiar with all the different resources around to host events, and so, and since they do a lot of events for the business community in the larger area, having someone like that can help for the things that you want to do as a community. They have a lot of resources you could draw upon many times.
Okay.
Thank you.
No action taken. Agenda item number ten, EDC coordinators report. Mr. Joyce.
Mr. President, members of the board, sorry, I'm missing last month, I had a, a long trip that I had planned for over a year with my wife, and we celebrated her, her birthday overseas, and so got back in the holiday, so I'm catching back up and drinking from a fire hose, but I will tell you that things I want to bring to you today, and what I wouldn't mind, if we can utilize executive session, is the two projects we discussed last time. Since coming back, I've got some additional information on the details on both of them that I would like to share with you and talk about a process moving forward, because we're at that point where they're, they're starting to share information, and we'll, we'll need to go, the process that this board and the council will like to go through in those discussions, and to give you information to make sure it's still a project of interest is where I would like to go with those two things. Additionally, you mentioned, and ma'am, minds think alike, Vicki and I started trying to meet regularly, and then I went out and she had some surgery and all, but we're getting back into where we're meeting weekly to make sure we're coordinating on the different things that are going on within the, the community, and also within the, the projects to make sure we're on the same page, so that, that keeps the, the board informed, because I know she has close ties there. Additionally, we talked about at that time, where do we take the program, where do we, where do we take things? And we'd actually talked about a business retention program, that I would suggest is different, but can be supplemental to your approach, because we talked about getting the list and, and meeting with, going out and meeting individually with the different business owners as a part of an effort to do a business retention effort, and that captures information to find out when their leases expire, or if they're looking to expand, or if they're having problems with employees. And then the, the things that you're, you're discussing from a business retention standpoint is often done as a celebration of the business, to thank them for locating in your community and, and showing appreciation for them being there, as well as allowing the networking that oftentimes the chambers can help facilitate as well. And so, if, if, if you do a contract with a chamber, you may be able to accomplish that portion of the economic development efforts, because then the members can become chamber members. The cost isn't incurred by the EDC, but the EDC through their membership to the chamber can help pay for some of those things, and so your cost goes down, your impact can go up, and you've brought in someone else that it can expand your reach for less money. So, that's something else that you, as you consider that effort going forward, that you may want, you may say, I don't want to do it that way, I have another way. It's not a right or wrong thing, it's your preference, but I would offer that for your consideration, and then I think supplementing it is to focus on some key employers here that some that we, the, the community has recruited, and some have come organically that we try to make sure we take care of. We additionally have had a couple inquiries on property. We had a gentleman come in, wanted to do a manufacturing, don't, Vicki and I met with a gentleman, and I think he's a good man, but I don't think he had his project really set, because he couldn't tell us how large he wanted, it was an acre, acre and a half, or five acres, or it was going to be, but yet it was coming really fast. So, we, we do see that from time to time, unlike the other two projects, which I'd like to discuss with you in executive session, which are monsters in comparison. There's still an Ace Hardware that's looking at right over by the pizza place, Orlando's. There's still a few other things that are, that are kicking around the area. I have a tour next week with a gentleman provides, he's reached out for some services, some employment services in the area, and wants to talk about business, and so we're following up on a variety of things. And about as fast as I can talk, that is a, a brief summary of the last couple weeks since I was pretty much out for November.
I'd like to give you a call here from a business, a local business here, it's called Hamco. Like, see if you can reach out to that particular company there. I went to go visit the company, and they, they offer startup businesses for different, different businesses. This company that offers startup for businesses.
Start what?
So, this company, that company, Hamco, will allow a, any potential entrepreneur to come into their building and set up to start a business without incurring a lot of extra costs upfront. They'll provide them a space there, they'll provide them a, off, a small cubicle to do all their, their accounting work, paperwork. They've helped a lot of different companies start up, some of them located in Brookshire, some of them didn't, but I think it's a great program that they have there, and they are looking to expand the business here in town, so hopefully we can get, offer them some type of assistance.
Brookshire, excuse me, Folscher is just looking at that business accelerator, as Sugar Land just did with Plug and Play, they, there's about three million dollars what Sugar Land spent. There's a series of these in and around the area that, it's not Consultant Connect, it's, name escapes me, I'm sorry, I'm too tired, but the one that Folscher's dealing with, there's, there are a number of these, it's good that this one located here without asking for funds, because typically they start by saying this, and so, if they're starting an incubator and they're, they're doing it privately, then that gives you an opportunity to see how, how they're going to operate it, so I will, I've taken a picture, do you want the card back?
They've been here for quite a while now, and they're looking to expand the business.
Outstanding. No, that's great, I'm happy to reach, I took a picture, do you want me, do you want the card, or I've taken a picture of it, so I have the information. Okay, so I will happily follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're going to executive session. Okay, we'll move on to eleven, future agenda items. Yeah, we'll, we'll skip that one, we'll go ahead and go into executive session.
Do you have some?
I just want to ask you the future agenda item.
Oh.
Yeah, it does say feature, yeah.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twelve, executive session. In our executive session at six seventeen. Agenda item number thirteen, discussion popular action, possible action in executive session, no action taken. We'll move to agenda item number eleven, future agenda items. Okay. What was part, base small field repairs? That's all you have, sir?
That's it, sir.
Ms. Dunn?
I don't know, do we need to put it back on there about the, the network mixers so we can present everything, or?
We have it done by, you can do it.
Have it done by then?
After you meet with her, then you can do it in January's meeting, after you meet with her.
That's what I'm saying, do I need to put it, because that's gonna be the next meeting in January, do we need to put that on there for future?
Well, yeah, if you want to go ahead and set the date. You think you have a time and date at the time, then?
We should have it done by then.
Okay, and future that I, so you want time and date for first business mixer?
False estimate, yeah.
Ms. Stouts?
Yes, I have two, updates on invoices and monthly reports.